Alright, we're good.
Good? You're okay. And we had Brett make the motion.
Oh.
Joe on second.
All favor.
Aye.
New post.
Okay. Moving on to those financial statements and bill payment list. Dan, you wanna do that?
Uh, yeah, so um, sort of your standard financial reports, um, that we include what we did just because of the timing is that these reports encompass the full fiscal year of twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Uh, so we've got the balance sheet, the problem loss, the general ledger for last fiscal year. And then also what we included is the bill payment list for any bills that were incurred by the GSA since July first or at the beginning of the next fiscal period.
Yeah, could you refresh our memory on that? I guess there was a credit for ID one, otherwise they're they're getting better rate than we are.
Having some question.
Yeah, yeah, that's a great question. Um, yeah, we look, we apply that too. So, um, the latest loan contribution, if you'll recall, the Conservation District and ID one had credits from their costs that they paid for the development of the action plan that were put towards their loan contributions. Um, and the ID one credit contribution did not get transferred from what I call the escrow account to the EMH GSA's account until July sixteenth, which is after the end of the fiscal year, which is why it doesn't show up. So in the next balance sheet that you'll see, you will see that that ID one's blood contribution is equal to each of the other parts. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I mean, I think I probably remiss in saying that, um, you know, cash flow is is going to be a challenge. It's not just the EMA, it's it's all of the management areas. Um, and it's it's largely associated with two things. One, um, and probably the biggest challenge, and pretty big challenge, but one is the the grant, structure of the grant. We have to outlay costs and then get reimbursed three to four months later on quarterly basis from DWR. So you're gonna sort of see costs get incurred. Um, we're using funding that we've received from the member agencies to pay those costs in the near term. And then when we get reimbursed with DWR, we replenish the bank account and then that can help cover future costs. Uh, and so that's just, you're gonna see that forward the cycle as we continue working through the remainder of the grant. Uh, the other piece is, you know, revenue. Um, up until June twenty sixth, the EMH GSA didn't have a revenue source, um, outside of member agency contributions. Um, and then even after June twenty sixth, with the adoption of groundwater extraction fee, um, it has revenue sources, but that revenue coming from in there. So the majority of that revenue will come in through the county tax roll. So that funding, the first portion of that funding, my understanding, will hit in November. Um, the second portion sometime in spring, in February. Um, and so there's a bit of a lag from when we adopted the fee, and we're actually gonna see those payments. Now, there is another component of the funding for the groundwater extraction fee that will be the direct build component to, uh, water utilities and, um, water companies. And so those bills haven't gone out yet, but can go out probably the next month or so. And so depending on how quickly those get paid, we may be able to start to see revenue from that portion of the extraction fee come in before the county tax roll. Uh, but still, there's, you know, the, uh, delay. But those are the, just the cash flow challenges that the EMA, WMA, and the CMA are all facing right now.
So as of June thirtieth, we have one hundred sixty-two thousand five hundred eighty-eight in our checking account.
Correct.
We had them. And and then on the next page nine, I see the negative three hundred fifty-four thousand dollars. So.
Yeah, that reflects the loans that the the GSA has paid. So it's not a negative, like, well, it's not a negative bank balance, but it it reflects the fact that we need to pay that money back at, I mean, starting in ten years, twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight.
And we have this down here, so we know what we can put it comfortably that the reimbursement window is in ID days.
Um, again, I defer to the Conservation District as a grantee, uh, but I mean, roughly, right? DWR is pretty consistent about turning around reimbursement payments, right?
Yeah, but, uh, yes, they've been a little bit slower. The R B enjoys this far much far more now and require a long-term review. Plus, we just, uh, we just found out that, um, with that year end, things got further delayed at DWR. So we've been tracking the last check and we understand it's been cut, but there's been some delays in getting out, but we expected it in it now. But it's been, it's taken longer this particular time. I just invented another one like five minutes ago. Other than this one, so. But, yeah, right, they've been pretty consistent.
Any questions on the bill payment list? Anything from Joe?
I have a couple of questions just about the direct billing. About what percentage of our overall use service and we probably with an administrative burden is back to you, but how much money?
Yeah, that's a great question. It's I think twenty percent of the revenue, just prop numbers, is necessary to come from direct billing. Uh, it's not a significant administrative burden, thankfully. I think it's twelve, um, agencies. So, yeah, it's a very manageable number of bills to distribute as a track payment.
And and have those gone in yet?
Not yet. We have not submitted those bills yet, but.
And you expect, well, when and how long do they have to take?
Um, it would probably go out within the next month. The focus really was getting everything ready for the tax roll, which had that very hard deadline of August eleventh. Uh, but, yeah, so I think they can go out in the month of September. Um, I don't think we prescribed a, a bill payment timeline, but I mean, we'll probably give I don't know, thirty or sixty days, something. I don't, I don't know if they're the way we plan it, tax and tax roll requirements requirement, but, uh, we'll something longer.
Really, that's the thing, who's in review?
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
The other question. I have one on the, uh, bank's agriculture services, new meter installed. That was a a monitor well, I guess, on private.
Uh, it was a meter installed on private property as part of the demonstration project for component two. I believe that was a meter that was installed on the local state, local then in here. Um, and they're gonna be participating in the demonstration project and providing us with meter production data and compare with electrical records, satellite virtual transpiration estimates, and other standards.
Okay. And then, uh, do I have a motion to assess the financials and pay the the bills? We have first, first, my name is, third to the second, all approved. Uh, and then, any days? None. Until item four A. Somebody's got a call. Um, okay. Dan, you wanna take that one for the GSA or GSI?
Yeah, so item four A, um, we have a proposal from GSI Water Solutions to prepare, uh, the five-year periodic evaluation for the EMA. Um, the five-year evaluation is a sigma required analysis, um, that, uh, well, it's like the name says, needs to occur every five years. This would be the first five-year evaluation uh, for, uh, the EMA since the adoption of the GFP. Um, the deadline for submitting the five-year evaluation, I believe, is not until March of twenty twenty seven. However, the five-year eval is included in the grant scope work under component four. And the deadline for completing the grant work and utilizing the grant funding is March of twenty twenty six, the end of March of twenty twenty six. Uh, and so therefore, uh, you're recommending that the board, uh, consider approval of this contract to allow the consultant to get started on that work so that they can complete that work, uh, before the grant deadline. Um, and, uh, and if we utilize that grant funding, that's currently available. Uh, there's, uh, another piece of this is the, is the financial component. You know, one of the reasons that we, uh, or didn't bring this in June, we wanted to do our diligence, ex, you know, take the, take stock of where we were at with the grant spending. You know, and anticipated cost to complete the grant activities. So in the staff report, uh, we included a table that summarizes the result, results of that evaluation. Uh, the proposal to complete the five-year evaluation is two hundred twelve thousand dollars. That is intended to come out of the component four budget. Um, that would likely, that plus the remaining, uh, scope of the component four, which includes next year's annual report, uh, would push, uh, the budget for component four over the the allocated amount in the grant. Uh, I think this is largely attributed to work on the action plan that was done and reimbursed through component four. Um, I think it was envisioned, um, that there was gonna need to be some work in working with DWR, GSP approved, that a lot of that work ultimately ended up being the action plan. And I think the cost for the action plan exceeded the very preliminary estimate, which they didn't really know what's based on. They didn't know what DWR was gonna add for, that was included in component four. So large, long I say that, you know, I think the action plan is probably the piece of this pushing us over, uh, the budget. However, when we look at the other components and more specifically component two, um, and and assess the amount of work that's left to do, uh, and the budget that's remaining, we we anticipate that there may be a surplus in component two. And so the net impact, and I I want to caution the board that these are estimates, cost to complete is based on, you know, that's the available information we have now. You know, there's some big dollar items that we don't have cost estimates for, specifically the drilling of the modern remotes with the commerce. So we try to do that we can to count them out. But with those estimates, the, you know, the projected is that, you know, we could be able to, we go over the grant budget by seven thousand dollars.
That's what we were saying, though, is the trade between component two and four, where you have an offset there.
We, we.
That's what I said, I was very specific that, you know, do work, it has to trace it all back to the or including, you know, trade.
In, in our discussions with, uh, DWR, they have indicated that there is the potential to move money. Uh, we have not gotten approval of this specific trade, um, necessarily, but, um, they have indicated the potential that through amendments, um, there are certain constraints that may limit the ability to move money from certain components that may probably likely tie into the storage of the funding. Um, but generally, they have been supportive of moving project around.
So, um, for the five-year evaluation, it's been, the timing doesn't align. So will we pay them ahead and then they'll do the work later or we submit earlier? What's the plan?
The plan would be to do the work ahead of time. Uh, let's submit early.
That's right, because work has to be done before we can slip to the grant.
Yeah. Um, one of the things that that we're gonna be doing and support leading with the CMA, the executive director in Conservation District is the grantee is meeting with DWR, talk about the potential to, um, extend the the timeline or the the deadline for the grant. Um, that would take some of the time pressure off, it would help with cash flow issues and and, uh, it would also have the the benefit, um, of allowing us to stick, extend the the timeline for the five-year evaluation to then document all the work that we're doing as part of the other components of the grant. So, you know, we think we have a compelling case for DWR to extend the timeline. Unfortunately, we've been talking to other GSAs with similar grants, and there are certain statutory limitations that should really just tie DWR's stamp on what they can extend and what they can't. And so we have been scheduled next week to get, um, information from them on what flexibility there might be. Um, but, uh, but we, we are bringing this forward because we are concerned that if there is not flexibility, March twenty twenty six is only six months away and it can be here before we know it. And it would like to be able to start our work.
Dan, the action plan is something, just to be careful, since we just talked about cash flow, is the action plan something that we can include so that deeper in effort? So we don't over send ourselves, or we know that we can swap the pieces around with the components?
Probably not the action plan, unfortunately. Actually, a lot of the the costs that I described in the action plan, that probably were above what have already been spent. Actually, that's those credits that we were talking about earlier for Conservation and ID one. Now, granted, there are current action plan costs that are being incurred to actually do the action plan, but the majority of that work is largely complete and will be presented at the workshops here in September. Uh, I mean, there may be other areas to look at, trying to limit scope, the level of effort within the grant. Uh, unfortunately, or fortunately, I think we've already tried to account for that in this budget estimate here. Uh, it is that, plus we, kind of our cost to complete analysis was, well, we've done all these things and spent this much money. We have these things left to do. I think that these will only cost, we can keep costs to these minimum amounts, and then with that, we'll have this much remaining. Um, I think, you know, there are certain tasks within component four. I think the larger, the primarily remaining one is the next year annual report. There's not a lot of flexibility there. We have to do the annual report. It's one of the, you know, really primary requirements for state regulations. Um, but we are looking for ways to to limit that as best we can. A lot of, in these different arenas, so really in all of our initiatives.
Yeah, I mean, just pulling that thread a little bit, um, like looking at what we approved in terms of legal costs over the last year seems to be one of the bigger bills bills to pay. Um, now that we've stood this up and we're moving out and a lot of tax work is done, can we see some drawdown on that based on the the next year look at that for for legal expenses?
Uh, I think so. Uh, I mean, a lot of our legal expenses were associated with groundwater extraction fee. Um, you know, a lot of legal, we go against the notices, developing the ordinances, responding to the legal, uh, objection letters. That was a heavy lift in in June. Um, and then also just managing the the legal protests for the property team. Um, so I think, yeah, you know, and we've got templates, professional services are bringing us now that we can utilize with a much lower level of effort. Um, so, yeah, I would hope and anticipate a legal cost of next year, you know, barring the ongoing team challenges would be low.
We'll be looking for that.
There's no way to combine the annual with the final evaluation?
I have not heard of that. So.
Good ideas. I can ask, like, everybody. Right? So, um, I kind of can't support this GSI request today, you know, for for a couple of reasons. One is that you know, in terms of fiscal responsibility, there may be some opportunities to look at some of the costs that that they have here. Um, but also, you know, agriculture has the opportunity, um, to review or do any input on the GSI, uh, activity. The, you know, the agency staff has had, you know, meetings every two weeks, you know, since our last meeting in June, and they've had presentations on this. Um, and we requested, you know, these agenda items in backup two weeks ago. We didn't get them. Um, and so, you know, we received this the same time you guys did on Friday, but you all have done it for your staff, giving you, you know, input. Um, and, you know, and we have, we have involved, you know, in setting them with thresholds and there's a lot of serious matters here. Um, you know, we'd like to have some input, um, on this and, and, you know, if our financial, you know, if the land among us, um, you know, gonna help our financial situation, you know, we can, you know, submit with you, everything. The workshop being, you know. I I need more information. We just got adjustments to it last night. Uh, the, um, the came in, so I guess it's kind of my concern.
What are the consequences of delay?
Um, well, I mean, the biggest consequence of delay is the potential to get the work done before the grant deadline. So I think, I think we brought numbers. Or you have seven months from today, the end of March. Um, we wait about three or six months.
We probably tell them things is out to May, or, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I, we, we actually, I, we have, in the, the professional services agreement, had to shrink the timeline or the deadline to match the grant. Um, it's still, I have the recommendation from staff then to just approve the whole thing, or can we divide out some of the objectionable boxes that you want to focus on and do kind of like to the party? Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think that is another approach that may be more palatable, would be we could authorize GSA to get started on, um, kind of the first three components. Um, you know, you've got your backgrounds, you have your projects, um, if management, and then, you know, I think really this developing the responses to DWR's recommended corrective actions is one of the biggest components of the five-year eval. Um, but I, I may want to defer to Tim, to GSI, to be to, I think if there are other sort of critical pa, items, and install some of that.
Yes, to us, we is, is where we think there should be indoor, mainly recommendably corrective actions and there's a lot of serious matters that are happening, that's very.
Yeah, I mean, if you read the language of the recommended corrective action letter, it, it doesn't sound very recommended. It's like, you will do these recommendations or DWR may not approve your, and then your your, uh, your, your, uh, your, uh, your, uh.
I'm not suggesting we don't do them.
Yeah, right. We, we proposed, and we just came back and said, yeah, I do those.
Yeah.
Yeah. I want to hear from Tim, but then maybe based on the timing.
Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, Tim would do better, but I'm careful spacing the timing.
That's logical. I'm like, yeah, the same shirt as your proposal. Well, the year is forty one. Probably, in fact, yeah. But as Dan said, we really owe them seven months for this. There's a lot of public input. And, um, the critical items are, I think, the recommended corrective actions are thirty-seven comments that the DWR put together or things that need to be addressed, with fixed wrong words like if GSA failed to do this, and it's gonna be, so I have to recommend, you know, the type of verbs, uh, GSA has to decide what to do with those recommendations. How will they, they're gonna address them? I wish, um, at least, uh, acknowledge them, how the GSA addresses them, uh, judge a circle. No, no work has been done so far, so, but these these recommendations are from the guidance document on what to be done. But, uh, nothing yet has been, the questions are out there. I have ideas of what needs to be done, but there have been no internal discussions on what, um, items need to be addressed, what, what needs to be done to move forward. The, the, the questions seem to come up together, open to, to talk to, 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 how that happens. Hold our, but. We have no, Jim.
Alright, well, you're gonna have to ship things one month to the right, because you haven't started, but you get, your schedule starts, it's like, oh, there's but, just, so you're already behind a month.
And, um, Joe, you have a question?
Well, if I understand what you're saying, um, the real, there, there's gonna be a lot of public input into this evaluation and what we actually approved with the final plan or or assessment. That's really where the discussion comes.
Yeah, that's right. So what, why, what we do, um, is up to the GSA staff, is up to the GSA committee, the GSA, on what is important to do on this, if nothing's been decided yet.
And how will it be decided? Is that's my question?
Yeah, so, I mean, the technical consultant will review the corrective action letter, prepare recommended responses, um, and or potential modifications to the GFP to respond to DWR's concerns. Those recommendations in the form of the GFP evaluation will then be presented to the public and the board through, I think, it's a series of prescribed meetings and workshops, um, with notice, public notice periods, and, and, you know, so DWR has really come laid out a timeline framework and then public review components uh, for this work. I think probably similar to what was required when the GFP was originally being developed. Um, and so, and then ultimately the board will decide, you know, if it likes the recommended approaches to the, um, the corrective actions included in the five-year eval, and then ultimately decide whether or not to amend the GSP ordering.
So it sounds like that's the real heart of, of what's at stake here. And if we delay them, I'm not sure that there's any input if we change the state's corrective actions that we still have to address and how we can address it is still in the future. Then you need to start to know of that sooner rather than later.
Yeah, this, this shifting has already happened, as we've kind of compressed the time with. Um, several of the GSAs, for reference, in our service and directors are going to, absolutely, we're, I believe, you know, uh, that is all we had sixteen months up to this. Other, other agencies have had much less. They just go into a closet and do it without public input. It took years, but this six months is pretty, pretty aggressive schedule, which is, right, Jim?
Yeah, it is. It's, it's, it's already constrained, and and it's, it's, I'm just hoping we could bring this sooner. We hadn't had time to dig into it and evaluate our budget with the groundwater extraction fee initiatives that we're ongoing. So, but, so, yeah. I, so that's why I'm here today.
So, I think, what I'm concluding from what I hear is that if we shorten it, there would be less opportunity for public
Yeah.
input and less opportunity for law or discussion of what your recommended actions might be.
Right, that's right. So probably, the advent of grant happens, there's a lot of time for public input. This is a public process, that's shown here in the lightest, the less, the more, I think, yeah, the later we start. We can't, we have less time with that. We would have less time to address them. They lost time to make any changes of the public.
Right, because you have a certain amount of public time that has to be given.
Right, right. It's not even determined whether we send each individual chapter and for public comment separately, or we do the whole thing as one which will sound less than. The main methods of doing this haven't been really discussed.
And the sudden directive that we got from DWR, and there's really no variance to that. This is what we must do. And the sudden directive that we got from DWR, there's really no variance to that. This is what we must do. Yeah, it's many, if we don't do it, then we're, we're hurt on the plan. So, and Doug, you had specifics that you, you wanted to look at of those sudden directives that, that we can't change?
Well, several of the things in here, I mean, staff, I don't know, presentations and talks with GSI about how this goes forward. You know, we have to, like I said, what it is.
Yeah, I just got Doug to go too.
I think all the board members there were the same vote. I learned, you think about it from staff particularly, and I don't think there's a whole lot to say at this point. There, there's, there's not really a decision about privacy to make.
That's, that's what we gotta do.
That's what we have to do.
Yeah, people's choice. Mary.
Are you open for public comment? You are not.
Yeah, you can comment.
Unfortunately, Doug was not able to come, or Director Circle was not able to come to the July meeting. But I remember hearing that there had been some disputes at the staff, or excuse me, at the agency representative meetings regarding this issue. And so I think that's why it's kind of become a little bit of a sticking point for us as we've not been able to have any representative meetings ourselves. So it's unfortunate that we did not have an August meeting, that that was canceled, so that put us back already a month.
True.
It looks like updating groundwater model and the developed plan periodic evaluation are two huge components. And perhaps we can start on those while Mr. Circle has an opportunity to review the thirty-seven items and feel comfortable about moving forward with that. I think it's a matter of principle that he feels like he's been not given the opportunity that other representative agencies have had.
Yes, I should, oh, with a quick comment on the table, one of the member agencies that have had an opportunity to see an outline of the scope of work. First of all, in terms of the thirty-seven corrective actions, that, that letter was issued by DWR. Do you have no bill to recall? Or, I mean, this, the corrective actions have been out there for a long time. It's a public document. They were presented to the GSA or the board packets. Those have been out there. And I don't think it's a function of us having an option of whether or not we're going to respond to the corrective actions. And all this still does is say that we're going to respond to them, doesn't say how will the responses are going to be crafted again. We just talked about that. It's all going to be handled through a public process. And if anything, my recollection or impression of the input that was provided by member agency staff is that sharpen your pencil, please, and make sure that the maximum amount is going to fall as closely as possible within funds that are available from the Prop sixty-eight grant. We didn't want a scope of work that had a cost associated with it that was going to be above what we have in the grant fund. So if anything, our input was make sure that whatever work you're going to do is going to fit within money we have with the grant because we don't have extra money to spend. Certainly, the agencies who have already contributed the two hundred thousand don't have extra money to be thrown at strenuous work. So our goal is to keep it as discreet as possible.
I think there's an underlying issue that we, we need to give further discussion at a future time. But I feel on this that there will be an extensive process and opportunity would involve. I don't think anybody must know any more than Director Circle does about this. And I feel that if we delay or try to segment it, that we, it just makes it harder to find the evidence. So I, I appreciate what Director Circle is saying, I think that's, but I'm not sure that we can address it in this. We, we just don't have the time and I don't think we've got the flexibility. If you found things, because they're still to be found, it's still in the public process, how are we going to respond to that? But I'm supportive.
Okay.
It's an interesting conversation. I think there is flexibility on the family, what we need to do. If there's, if the opportunity for input is to access that, I mean, if Director Circle knew and the act was to do this and you're active in that participation. That's the major point.
Well, I think there's some opportunity in the term before we get to the schedule of having input, you know, it's a long draft November. Why can't Doug, Ari, Kat, Merrill, he included in some of the staff discussions, we'll get there. So that there is a finite input.
And so they can definitely get with Dan at any time and get that input.
Yeah, I mean, is there, is there any partitioning of the, the tasks, Doug, that you feel could be broken out in, you know, time phase? Or otherwise, you know, we just accept the schedule, we have the noise, it's going to shift a month, but right, actually get. And then you kind of walk through the same timeline, but there's going to be some retraining because the end date is the key.
Well, that's evidenced by the fact that if you haven't talked to your staff, I mean, the staff meetings, what's happening every two weeks, you know, in duration of two hours, they're going through details from the GSA. And that's where a lot of the decisions are being made and then the recommendations are coming here. And we're making the decision without the benefit of all the discussion, you know, the other day, there's two presentations, one from the last and one from Stacks, you know, the, you know, the year data collection and, you know, how do we manage several processes? They actually have presentations from, I'm sorry, and there's the, we don't have the benefit of knowledge on that, you have to be asked of these things as well. So if that's where the decisions are going to be made and our recommendations are going to support, you know, it's hard that process that we, you know. Have us involved in those meetings where this is going to get the stuff. I think Tim said, you know, he's going to take his permission from Dan and from the staff, is what he, what he just said, so that's where, that's where the policy is going to be.
Didn't we have about three, two meetings ago, discussion on the HAGS staff division, some legal stuff that our legal counsel advised if we, you know, recommend it. But I think we had that discussion and we decided not to have that happen for legal reasons. But I don't see why we can't work with Dan closely to bid your concerns answered until we can figure out a way to get you to be a staff person.
Well, Mary and we both set up calls, we tried to set up calls the last couple of weeks that have been unable to get on Dan's schedule. We didn't get these presentations when we asked, you know, you know, we weren't able to be involved in this and, you know, a lot of this is happening. Now, not only were they asking, Mary and I, you know, in conference, they tried to drive up the speed. But, you know, a thirty minute or forty minute call with Dan, bring us up to speed when, you know, there's four hours of staff meetings every month. Just, it's not the same as being involved in the process.
I'm sorry, I can't alleviate that, like I say, and we don't have counsel here, so I don't speak wrongly there. But Dan, can you somehow share with Doug information, and target is input to take? That can be part of it.
I mean, I can't. The challenge with that is having a separate, it's, it's just a time of love and effort, you think? Because that's, you know, we've got cash flow issues, urgent challenges, and so duplicating those staff level meetings, it's, it's, it's just, there's a cost to share.
I see, I see two separate items here. One, to help get Doug more situated, feeling comfortable with the way information is processed and recommendations come to us all. And the other is, is what you call PSA, usually decided upon. So I think we're going to need a motion. We go with the PSA agreement?
I think we go with staff recommendation and I would, and with direction that we're still trying to figure this out. Because we want to bring agriculture, we want everybody to be invested in this process, but I think business and the issue, that would really, I don't think for our time, because we'll change what we've got to do and there's out of the process if you didn't participate. But it's not, that's why I think that motion.
That's a motion to approve. The PSA with GSI. Now the second, want to do a roll call, bro, or do you have your name?
That's the chair for our.
If you have your name, all those favor of PSA, PSA agreement with GSI. Do I hear your name? And, right. And those in favor? I. Those opposed?
No, no.
Three to. Got it?
Uh, yeah, so three to go.
Three to, three to vote doesn't count.
Well, I, that, I think we probably could do some clarification on that. There are certain items that require super majority approval, and there are other items that require majority approval, three votes. Michael, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
I mean, I guess, well, since I know we're going to talk, we can figure this out on my, yeah. So if you could please just investigate that, Michael's a totally on the spot player.
I have a question.
Yeah, let's move on. Yeah, it doesn't matter, so, yeah, but that is a question we can do.
It's my understanding the question is whether this would take a super majority vote? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not able to hear.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, I, I, I don't have the bylaws in front of me, but I could look them up. But I would suggest going ahead and moving on the votes. It is what it is.
It's, you know, I mean, agriculture will be involved in the public policy, as evidenced by, you know, the last meeting, most of the, or I should say, all the public proposition, you know, the research was, was not in those people's mind. He certainly supported a hundred.
I don't think you're being a device, because I don't think you need more information, I don't mind. And I want to do, believe it or not, which you guys, you know, believe, you guys are important to the process.
Can you let me understand the staff meetings aside from these and why is it necessary when you have, you hired Dan to do this all day? Why, why do you have staff meetings behind the scenes? He should, who's driving the ship here? Is he driving it or is the staff from the water district, Doug? It seems odd to me that you have meetings of staff that decide what's going to happen here. Is he involved in those things? Is his staff involved in those? It, it doesn't make any sense to me. So can you explain that to me? How does it merge? You're a guy, you're the decision makers, not staff in the water district.
Right.
It seems like it's backwards to me to listen in this conversation.
They give the recommendation, we make the decision. Dan runs the staff meetings, gives the information, shares it, and he come up with the best possible recommendation they presented to us for the vote.
But who's in the staff? I don't get it. Who? He's the guy you hired. So why, why do you have staff from the conservation district and the water district on there? In you, it's something handed to you, that seemed to me.
Well, we have a major, major brand with various different time than one. And we're in a period of transition from when the agency staff did all this to actually having our executive director take over. And I think it's an all hands on deck right now to, to get through with this Prop sixty-eight grant. And I think, I think we have just accomplished something extraordinary to get that rate study done, to get that into the auditor's office. I mean, that was a heroic effort, and that took all hands on deck. And now we get this grant, the same, one person can't do it all. And so we need the worker bees to, to, to manage, help manage that grant. And, and once that goes away, I think it'll be more business as usual, and I think it will be possible for Dan with, with. He's, he's running as fast as he can, and, and he needs some help right now, or we're not going to really be successful with this grant. And that's going to set us up, I think, for success in the future.
But I, I just don't think it's very transparent. I, I think you hired him to be the executive director, and the other guys are doing the work. I, I get you're in time for, I get that, but from my point of view, it's not very transparent. And so Pat's left out of it, and I'll say, well, it's too bad, but we got to get this done because we're going to run out of time. I get that, but I just, I'm just cautioning you. It seems to me that's not very transparent to me. You hired him to do the job, let his, his, he can further do it.
Thanks, Kevin. And Adam?
I'll put this out there. First of all, we've only got so much money to hire, and we're already, you know, we've got billable hours. We, we somehow got to manage within the budget constraints that we have. I, I don't know if Director Circle, if this would be, you're welcome to come to my staff, the, the meetings that I get informed. I'd love to join in arms of you and, and have you get the same briefing I do. It's, it doesn't get you in the staff meeting, but none of us are in this staff meeting, and that means something.
But I appreciate that, that offering. I think that the issue is, it's not, you know, the same staff meetings, two hours every two weeks. The real sausage is being made, and, you know, they're, they're certainly doing a lot of work. But, you know, there's some examples, it'll come up later, where actively helpful, in some way, we're, you know, getting asked to go on the way. And we didn't get any input, so we're being asked to go on, it's probably not working. You know, and so you're symbol, being involved in that process, we're now listed on other basins. And there's some specific reasons why it might not work in the way it's being proposed to us to sign on from a practice standpoint. You know, it's examples like that, you know, have to go through. But they're going, you know, extended pay seventy-five percent of the extraction fees. We're not getting any input into that process. It's, you know, four hours a month in this case, you know, eight hours since our last feed. That's a lot of work that's been done. None of us have benefit of, unless, you know, unless we're in the process. But, you know, in terms of getting it rolled out in agriculture and getting well registration in place and meters replaced and that this goes smoothly. We've seen it not as smoothly in other agents, in other basins, we've seen it not smoothly in some basins, and not even those being created from the process. And we weren't there for these presentations that they had, data collection, and, you know, we'd be beneficial if we would have heard, you know, what was happening, and we didn't hear it here. We didn't hear it in the staff meetings, and the way we hear it, we asked well of today.
And that's really for all of us, Spirit. They present options and we.
Yeah, because I think, I didn't hear about this until they came out. We all got, thank God, if you're.
Even if you have to cater. It's not really a margin of holes, so we're.
Right. Okay, let's move on. For the, Dan, you wanna take that?
So item four B is a proposed amendment to the well registration. Ordinance that this board has previously adopted. I would characterize it as, you know, it's relatively minor amendments. The, the idea of adding a. Self-certification process. For de minimis users who was identified. And so we thought that that was a good idea because, you know, when we register wells. Uh, whether it's a, a de minimis, meaning two acre feet per year or less being used for domestic purposes. It has certain exemptions versus other wells that either produce more than two acre feet or for non-domestic purposes. So having some sort of system in place to. Have well owners self-certify or provide some sort of justification why they should be classified as de minimis. Was thought as good due diligence. Uh, in, in the well registration process. And then probably the biggest impact that this would have if you are de minimis, you're, you're exempt from the well metering and reporting requirements. If you're not de minimis, you are, uh, if adopted by the board, you could be required to install the meter and. Report your production. And so this is just an addition. So when we go through the well registration process, you want to be classified as de minimis. We request that you provide some level of justification. So we included just some examples. I would say, so this, this ordinance, uh, well, this amendment to this ordinance was presented to the CAG at the July meeting. Um, we received feedback from the CAG that some of the original language around the technical justification was maybe a little bit complicated. Or potentially intimidating for rural development. So we, we tried to, we, you know, do soften the language or use more, you know, generally a known terminology. But at, at the same time, keep the intent is that we want some sort of technical justification that we're de minimis. And so that, that, that was the end what we got from CAG. And we incorporated that into this draft that we're seeing here today. There were a couple of just other sort of. Finer changes to some of the language. That are included in this red lines.
So Dan, I was supportive of this very, which is changes.
Um, and we did not have a follow-up CAG meeting to, you know, show them the new language. But we felt that we addressed the intent of their comments. And I know we could have a number of CAG members here today that is, you know, what they think maybe they're not.
Yeah, they're bored and they're coming on.
I used to question, I mean, so we're saying that you have to get a meter if you pump anything more than two acre feet and you're under two acre? Um, same with this ordinance?
Well, this ordinance isn't saying that specifically. This ordinance is just, it's a well registration ordinance. So they have to tell us if you have well, potential form, you have to tell us what type of ability you have and answer, say, questions or provide the information shared on. Under, um, section A of the, the rules and regulations component of the ordinance. Uh, in addition, you would also say whether or not you are a de minimis pumper. And can provide some sort of justification for why. Could be or feel that you are a de minimis pumper. Then, then that's, but that's where it stops with this ordinance. Then, but the next item, which was the well metering and reporting ordinance. If that were to be adopted, um, it has. Language in there included that de minimis pumpers are exempt from well metering and reporting requirements. And that's not even the GSA, it's really prerogative of the CIGMA exempts them.
Is this a semantics thing though? Because it says to install measuring devices. So by jumping to the conclusion that it's a meter and there could be other measuring devices that could be less effective, but still satisfy this person's daily proposition. Yeah, on these ten on boards that were amended based on this CAG report.
Um, I'm not. Being.
My own law one, number one, by page two, page two, one, again. Okay, so. All right.
But I think if we're gonna have the de minimis, we're asking now, you know, aerial photographs of your acreage. You know, it's somewhat big in terms of if you, if you have twenty acres of parcel. And you have a meter, you're using less than two acre feet when we know when, you know, the crop usage is greater than that. If they are horse facilities or vineyards or something, I mean, are we encouraged? It seems like competition around. You know, if it exceeds five acres and something, you know, something that doesn't create bad behavior, would just be a concern. Maybe that's in the engine of the issue.
Did the CAG address that? Have any questions on the acreage size and then using the aerial evidence?
Don't believe.
Yeah. I think we do. Same question you just asked. How, how can you get around when you have twenty acres?
And we don't want to reach for it anyway. You don't have to put a meter on. And, you know, so if they send you an aerial with this twenty acres, it just seems like some criteria that says. I mean, the vegetable crop is two acre feet. So if you have more than one acre. You're like, you know, you could exceed it, it just seems very.
I agree, it's, it gets more to the metering thing, uh, that there needs to be some additional stuff. Because just thinking in our customers and our mutual water company, we have people who have irrigated pastures for their horses. I know people that are not within our community, but just outside that are actually growing, uh, stuff like orchard grass. You know, so it's a hate crop. But then we have a lot of people who just have expansive lawns and, you know, what's, they're, they're using a lot of water, obviously. We have, uh, some properties that have a whole bunch of thirsty trees on them as an example. So are we just focused on crops or are we looking at landscaping? And some of these other things where a horse pasture, irrigated pasture, someone might not think that that was included. Uh, we have people who don't have what I'll call managed pastures. They're out there watering the mustard plants and the, you know, dubweed and everything else that comes up. So where do we kind of draw the line when we're asking for this sort of description? So I agree, we need some better definitions because it's a broad, broad brush of, you know, just within a neighborhood. All the different rides running along across the valley.
So I mean, I could just speak to, I mean, one. Data source that we do have, it's satellite, it have a transpiration estimates that we use to the purple pieces of. That is a groundwater extraction fee. Um, and those get really pretty granular in their problem mapping. So, you know, I think we go for same examples, a hobby vineyard or other things will get picked up by L and IQ or the D O P E T. So we have estimates of, you know, that, that, of transpiration, uh, usage for nearly all of the sort of act related. Uh, fields within the basin. So if somebody shows us a lot and it's got three acres or five acres of ag, it's the, it's a de minimis. We're gonna say, well, that doesn't really match with what that J D T tells us. And so the CAG has to provide some justification. And then either I get one customer or.
Yeah, but just for my practice, then we have an expensive process and policing. You know, maybe some definition on what is de minimis in terms of acres or, you know, something that would be easier to enforce. You know, ask them to get imposed because if somebody, I, I just don't want to create a situation where there's any advantage from bad behavior and then not achieving our goals and keeping track. And we then tell them they don't need meters. It's a bad set of competition because then you're gonna have to go police it. You know, don't have those.
Do you have a suggestion like the de minimis one acre math?
Yeah, I mean.
Let's, you give me some thoughts of what it could be.
Yeah, I mean, it depends on the conflict, you know, actually seeing acres or, you know, something smaller. I mean, something that helps.
Right, no, I, I'm agreed with, now I'm trying to find what we're gonna do. You know, maybe one acre, half acre.
I mean, if you have one acre, you could put water there. Some theoretically, you have two acres, you know, the house is not to consume your house waters. It is a difference. But, um, you know, I just think the order, you know, if we have to collect from loans, people that will have the right to collect from, but that, you know. Probably a bit complicated or necessary, you know, trying to launch more space though. It just seems like it's a bit.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I'd point out that it's intended to be more prescribed than, so before, the ordinance that it adopted didn't have any sort of justification. It was just, you know, you say whether you're de minimis or not, and we didn't have any sort of self-certification process. This is an attempt to find some way that you can, that a, a, a de minimis user can justify why they're de minimis. And we can pay them more for sure to, yeah.
I mean, I think it may not be easier for you to force them.
Yeah.
I'll lose four D the way you think you can imagine.
Well, actually, I probably understand, but, you know.
Definitely not to be that one, Richmond, yes?
I, I guess I don't quite understand about the, so each of a lot of companies that, um, so they've got customers who have big lawns or irrigating pasture for horses. And to house that.
Well, so they, they would not fall into the de minimis.
Right.
Yeah, they have a centralized well that pumps more than two acre feet.
So it's in, in the aggregate, they, yeah. So, so, but if you are on a parcel and you have your own well and you've got supper fields or V V R or something, will it, oh, will they air help capture that or will they?
Um, I believe that large areas of the turf will get captured as well. Or, I mean, it's to Doug's point, it's another level of effort for us to pull out there, airwind measures are running there. Yeah, and, and then there's a question, how much time do we want to spend on this, right? So in this case, now charging de minimis regardless, they're still paying a groundwater extraction fees. Whether or not they're required to, to install a meter for their production is really the difference that, that what happens if they're de minimis.
Right, but we think if they install meters, to Doug's point, that it would let them know how much they're producing and, uh. And I think that's unfortunate. Well, it's an iterative process. We're not gonna get it perfect, but I think it is part of the question.
Barry, you're first.
Um, so I think at the CAG meeting, let me know if I'm incorrect. We thought about actually doing it similar to what, um, the district does where I, um, you send out an, an information sheet. And it's like, okay, it's for how many people are in your house and then how extensive is your landscaping? How many animals, like horses or whatever? And that's how we do it. And I know for myself, um, you know, our family owns two properties that are not adjacent to the ranch. But, um, one of them's forty acres and one of them is maybe eight acres. There's no crops, there's no animals, there's, it's just a homestead. So I would, sorry, Director Sermon, advise against doing it on acres. But a similar thing, I thought we wanted to simplify it and do it where they can say. I, it had misunderstood me and talked so, we just wanted a little more information than the information we just discussed to give us confidence that. The certification is correct. Right, you know, as you think about it, it's, it's, well. They don't want to just stop the meter and they don't have acreage or, you know, a big yard, big horse pasture, I mean. No, it, it doesn't seem fair. With the small ones, so.
I mean. Yeah.
And then we're going to ask them to update, then we can, so that we know if something's changed. It is still self-enforcement. So we, we, we. Want to continue to support that and encourage that self-enforcement. We should probably come back every couple of years. That we know, the answer.
Yeah, I mean, I might.
Just a couple other thoughts and this gets into the next one too about the metering. Because there is a section that where it's asking for. Props and things like that, that there's gonna be a questionnaire. Uh, and I think maybe that's what we're talking about. What the types of crops that we're grown and all that. So that's on the next one that we'll talk about. But didn't see anything about ponds and a lot of people in the area have ponds.
It's a premium, I already issued.
Well, just to look at the real estate ads, I mean, it's. Look at the highlight one. And, you know, they sometimes have fountains that are to keep the water flowing. And so just, I think the one thing for me is that we need to have a clear point of communication. Because when people do this for the first time, there's gonna be a lot of questions. So almost like, you know, having some sort of either an email thing or an actual hotline where people can call and get answers since they have to do this first time certification.
That came out in the public commentary, a lot of people just don't, aren't used to that, I agree, they, acres, uh, acre feet, there's a parallel to the measurement. So just eat some. Circle signs, yeah.
Jim, did you, you had your CAG number?
I was always just gonna say that when we did the groundwater state of really, we, it was pretty straightforward who, which parcels we thought were probably de minimis users. Basically, they were outside of a, of a water purveyor. They had, they had domestic, they have a house there without water, well, without a lot of large acreage around it. We chose it, we moved just to that for population.
Yeah, just, just to add to that, I have just a couple points of clarification. One, just keep in mind, it's de minimis, it's two acre feet for domestic purposes. Everything you've talked about, props, everyone was talking about. If you have commercial operation, you are not domestic, okay? You have crops that you're selling, you're not domestic. Two acre feet for domestic purposes. Also, one, one other thing, the, the GSA just sent domestic, I'm sorry, de minimis bills to list the people in the basin, right? They said, you people, we're charging you on your estimated ET. And everybody else are just getting charged this de minimis fee. Everybody's getting the same fee, about one twenty seven acre feet or something like that. Next year, GSA is gonna do that calculation again. And GSA is gonna make another bill to these people, you're de minimis, these people, you're not. So GSA already has a list of people they think are de minimis. But every year, it's gonna be generated. And then the few people that may choose to contest whether they're de minimis or say, you know, we got a bill saying we're not de minimis, but we think we are. It's gonna be a small subset of that. So I, I think GSA is already generating a lot of information every year on that. And we're just happening to be a response to that.
But then we have a lot of information that, that's one.
That's good, but then we have to, but our language needs to be held enough to, you know, kind of substantiate what we're saying through the whole fight when we doubt. So I think what we're hearing is more detail than you're for pitches, we need to do the same.
Yeah, um, yeah, I mean, we kind of left it as technical justification, but, but, um. I mean, I think the one of the ideas of forms, instead of, well, how many acres of lawn do you have? Put in a water use factor, how many livestock do you have? And to help them calculate, I mean, could be needed more structure growth. Now. It is challenging and, and I mean, to Matt's point, I mean, it's, it's probably, it's not, it's, uh, it's probably a small percentage for those that were working out the cash. And asked, you can look at the narrative. you can look at the aerial and.
The point that I was making is that what restrictions for medical things, sort of. Right, so that should be.
Did you get that? I'm like, well, it's nice that I'm not on me, but.
I think the reminder, the definitions of water, water treatment, very succinct. You like, it's just a person who extracts for domestic purposes, two acre feet of life.
Yeah, that, that is a method for that two acres.
And I think the point is, is really simple here, and I appreciate that we're talking around the fringes of it, but the point is Sigma says that you can't require a de minimis producer to install a meter, so they can sort of get a pass on that cost and you can't require them to report their production. So de minimis producers, as defined, sort of get, they're not asked regularly. So all this ordinance does in the self certification process is to say, hey, look, you get quite a benefit by being categorized as de minimis. So instead of the GSA just taking your word for it, we're just asking those who want to claim de minimis status to self certify based on, you know, some, some form of data, it's not specific, it was intended to be flexible in response to CAD concerns, we didn't want to set up like you have to sign in blood or submit your, you know, your last five years of tax return or something, it's just give us some technical justification to support your self certification that you're de minimis. So we're not going to come after you and require you to install a meter or report your metered production data to the GSA. It's, that's all that's new in this, in this updated version of the well registration ordinance, is a simple self certification statement that people who want de minimis status will fill out a form and say, hey, I'm de minimis, so don't require me to throw a meter, that's all that's important.
So, again, just, because I think there's, you know, we want to keep it as simple as possible, but, again, just in our mutual water company, we have mutual water companies supplying water, but then there's also people with their own private groundwater wells, and I, I'm imagining where everyone wants to have that situation. So, uh, you know, and the wells, which I'm aware, uh, you know, sometimes people are using them for their irrigation or to keep their pond full because it's cheaper for them to do that with than to pay the mutual water company. So there, there are complicating things, like using, uh, the transpiration.
Just on that part, I'm thinking, these are good topics, people, I don't have all the answers, that's good, so if they have their own well to fill their pond, that's not de minimis use.
But they may claim it.
Well, they claim it.
And so for, so for mutual water company, you know, we know, because all, our, all of our places are metered, so we, we know how much water each, uh, parcel is using. But what they're using it for, no, we have no, I mean, like I said, anecdotally, I know of, you know, one place that's doing it to fill their pond and irrigate from three acres of lawn. Isn't it, so, uh, you know, it's, this, it may sound simple on the surface, but I think, like, again, thinking back to the hotline, we're going to need some coaching and helping to kind of sort it out. The road leads the road.
It's supposed to be residential only, though, right? Like, is that part of the definition, it's?
Because it is further defined by the character of regulations, to build more than a half acre of, um, your pigeon plants.
Well, that's helpful. So we may incorporate that definition?
No more than a half acre.
Yeah, and that, that really is domestic.
Yeah.
If you need to add more, thank you, guys.
I'll just add.
That's, that's very right.
I think that's kind of a clear.
Yeah, I mean, we could add, sees the defines domestic, so it's explicit, uh, domestic is defined as, I mean, if I don't know, it's just no more than a half acre, then maybe some other comments to it, but.
Title twenty three, section six sixty four, your.
Thought we were going to add in here, we're going to add definition of domestic, that title, whatever.
Yeah, depending on how likely that title is, maybe we just put the code over it on some lyrics.
Isn't that?
Yeah, but people won't understand that.
Yeah, it involves.
I'm not going to cover that.
Well, we, yeah, well, we could add the last line, just that we need to help get the point across, so what is defined as domestic. Okay, um, we want to bring this back next one, or? So to you, I mean, there really is the, the descent of urgency, guardage and actuarial registration office tweet. We have earnestly started a lower registration process, you know, I've said it earlier, it's really trying to we need to pick a platform for where all the data is getting to go, so that we start, we've got an official place to tell our guy that, so if you guys want to bring it back with the amended language, that's pretty funny, or you can adopt it with the direction that I was providing.
You guys can all just bring it back? We don't know if the domestic code.
Stand up a half acre.
Declaration, I think the line is giving. Do that, that's pretty definitive. Get that one?
Uh, well, here, you want to hear the definition? De minimis use means the use of water in home and resorts with wells, organs, camps, campgrounds, et cetera, including the incidental watering of domestic dog or family supers sustenance or enjoyment and irrigation of not to exceed one half acre of lawn, ornamental shrubbery or gardens at any single establishment.
That's, that's very short, that's pretty clear, so you could add that one in?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, add it back.
What is an establishment, but, uh, you know, be, go very, but that brings up that question.
So the B, the red, the red letter changes plus that, that you just put for the mass fees. And, um. And then one other thing, I didn't say, but, did you text us already, we made it out, it was that we're not in a M O U anymore, or a J P A.
Uh, that have to be props of my attention, so, yeah, there's one more, uh, editorial change. Yeah.
That's the same one, the next one, I'll skip.
Yep.
Okay, you got it?
Yeah.
Okay, and more public comments. There we go, okay, do I have any positions?
So, just about, so if your, if your commercial is two acre feet, if you're domestic, it's a half acre.
That's accurate.
Or you're not, or you're here.
And this is two.
Oh, that's good, yeah. Right.
Okay, Seth.
Uh, I'm Seth, yeah.
Do we have a motion to accept the amendment to ordinance number twenty twenty five dash zero?
You make motion, you second.
Oh, okay. And set five minutes. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. I'm, sorry about that, guys. Okay, four, two, ordinance number twenty twenty five dash zero, damn, you want to go through that?
Yes, so I have four C, um, is the, um, proposed, um, poll of the area, and we're reporting ordinance. I believe this is probably the third time that the board has seen this ordinance, um, with, you know, some users along the way. This ordinance was presented in June, there was a request to then have run this through the CAG, um, so the CAG, we had a CAG meeting in July, also where the CAG reviewed and provided input on this ordinance. The CAG input was, you know, summarizing that, you know, I think it was originally proposed, there was a one year timeline to install meters. Um, input from the CAG was, um, that that was maybe tight, um, and so, uh, we modified it to extend the deadline to, um, I think the recommendation was a year and a half, but we actually applied it to be more like a year. Eight months, basically to align, like you, like you see in here, it's a requirement, and it is installed by the end of June twenty twenty seven. Um, and, and that modification was made so that we could start collecting data. They, you know, it's, it's an interval that aligning was sort of, uh, activity, so that would be beginning with this one year, otherwise it would have been like day the fifteenth or something, which is my birthday, but that's not important for others. So, uh, so that was one modification of the venue respects to CAG, uh, from, can input from the CAG, um, and then another recommendation was to include, uh, reporting of the irrigation method and system type with the reporting of the meter groundwater extraction data, that's, that's in addition that you will see in the updated ordinance. Um, additionally, there were, um, some other changes, uh, likely term editorial changes that you see in section one. Um, and then there is the reference to the memorandum of agreement that we just removed from the well registration ordinance that we, uh, would propose to remove. Uh, there is also a language, I don't, I don't think this is necessarily new, but with respect to de minimis, uh, users and the self certification, um, that references back to the well registration ordinance. Uh, and, and then something that's not included in here that, uh, we thought of, uh, after this got published was that there's some probably benefits to thinking through the reporting intervals. Um, so I think it was, it was written in the version that you have, and, and here, I'll, I'll just hand these out for the worst consideration. Uh, and there's, I'm going to scan it as well, but we'll just talk through it verbally, is that the way it was written in the post version, that the reporting was going to be done at the end of June, and then at the end of September, which, you know, I think that's how other systems has done anything that aligns with the fiscal year. Uh, but when you think about how the D N A has structured its annual reporting and groundwater extraction fee implementation, those reporting intervals create some pretty significant challenges. So if you don't get the data for the end of the water year till the end of January, you've got to incorporate that into your annual report and submit that annual report, excuse me, D W R by the end of March. And so, um, it's a real tight timeframe, it's been a challenge for, uh, the previous annual reports. When that data theory, you made the reporting, uh, period aligned with the water year could be available in October, so five to three more months to incorporate that data into your annual report. And then the other challenge is on the other half end is if you don't get your data for implementing the groundwater extraction fee until the end of July, you have, you only have eleven days to turn down, we're going to have to give this to the county to lay the tax roll. And so that is also artificially constrained, so, so we, in the red line, as you'll see under item P, uh, we would propose considering, uh, shifting the reporting, so it's still the same amount of reporting. Uh, groundwater extractors are still taking monthly readings, but they, they will only be required to this, report them to the GSA. Uh, well, they would be required to report them to the GSA during October and April, as opposed to doing it in January or in July. And so that is just something that occurred to us as we were prepping for this meeting, but that could make our lives a lot easier, at least from the GSA's creation perspective. And so there were some other changes made since days proposed, uh, to accommodate that. And I understand that, you know, it's coming at you hot fast, and so, uh, but we did, just want to give you at least the latest available information and thoughts that we had on this for the fourth consideration. I think that covers the main items that have changed or that have been.
Doug, that's right. So, um, I agree with James, best facility, you know, our means, our timing work. Um, I guess the, the mean rate, the reporting frequency is something that I think we should talk about, you know, what's happened at other basins, which is monthly becomes an onerous upon users to keep track of monthly and, and, uh, there were examples in other basins where some people are here in the wintertime and not in summer, or in summer and not in winter, and not here on a regular basis to take it. And so, um, you know, people reported in Fox Canyon and Oxnard for the last forty years, twice a year, um, and as long as you have a totally meter, you still have the capture of the total amount of water that's used. And I think that the enforcement mechanism where we're chasing people who are out of town for three months and we don't get their invasions. And, and also, you know, in this, in this basin, we basically have a lot in May, even December, through March, and we don't really use much water. And so I don't know what we gain by asking people to do a monthly, I mean, it's other viewpoints, but the two points that I would make is maybe it's easy for these people to comply, and also easy for us to, if we don't get it, they're only chasing it twice a year, it's going to.
Right.
Wrong for here.
Well, we require reporting twice a year, but the month and the same day, personally reporting each month how much water they're using, and they're record keeping, and then by management don't get a toll for each of them.
Well, I think the reality of what's happening in other basins is that they don't keep track of it on the monthly, and then we chase them because they didn't, they didn't assist to be allowed to get it, and then more a month later, when we, or seven months later, and we find out they did, and so we don't know how much has been done each month, but at least if it ties to the meter reading, we would capture, if we collect it in two, four entries, we, you know, capture everything that exists. And it will be easier, you know, I think compliance would be better.
Are all the meters that we're requiring? I can't really show the use, but I think that, I think.
Yeah.
So.
Dan, oh. Dan, what's your thoughts on that? You know what's required from Sigma, is this still going to need it, like I suggested?
Um. I think so, I mean, so, like, from a billing perspective, we bill water down in annual base, well, currently to the actual, actual billing, so it meets that requirement. Um, from a reporting perspective, I, I don't know that D W R requires more granular groundwater extraction data, they're just interested in the annual total, and looking at Matt, Tim, and others, Bill, I don't know that D W R would care if it. Bill, I don't know that DWR would care if it, by annual reporting versus monthly versus, I mean.
Oh, you mean this much?
An annual report. I would like that they just want to see how much groundwater is pumped over the year.
I think the annual reports, I mean, reporting that are just.
But I think it the work from that perspective, I mean, it would be, they will live, compare satellite A T data as granularly, but I don't know that we need to do that. You don't have to have any meters, so you don't have to deal with other data sources. I, I don't see a problem with that. Uh, but.
Um, I, I'd just like to hear what Matt has, you know, his thoughts.
I, I don't have any specific thoughts on that. Um, I just will say in Kuyama, and I know it's monthly, and in San Antonio, which is a whole entirely by God, they also require monthly readings uh, of the meters.
But we don't turn them in.
They're not, they're not turned in monthly, so if you all like.
They're not turned in to the GSA. The farmer, the guy does himself, but you don't have to, what we're asking for is twice a year.
But, well, I just read it on your website, it says, recorded monthly and then submitted twice a year. We always record monthly, submitted once a year, which I definitely recommend against.
Because the monthly being included to the semi-annual submission, it's all made it there for twelve months total.
Well, yeah, gives you a total, yeah.
No, not in this, the only thing that you can see a monthly rate is top.
It's just like we do with, with you guys. We, we turn in how much we use for that period. And then we turn in a thing that says how much we use a month, but it's not required. We just do that for that. And that was the intent of what we did in Los Angeles, in San Antonio. Because you get to the end and like Doug says, it totalized, you have the toll. That's what you're looking for, it doesn't really matter how much you need. Because not much you don't give any. So we don't see no requirements with monthly accounting and, you know.
I'm not aware of any stigma requirements.
Yeah, it's a bit of the toll. And.
The similar requirements are encouraging local control and local agency to decide one, right? So, you know, the regulation abroad and.
Okay.
On that one.
So we just add the two times they turn it in. Maybe, maybe your needs, the process and the aggregate falls straight out of it.
I mean, from a practical standpoint, we're going to have more reinforcement to try and meet one thing.
Yeah.
You know, but then, you know, on farm operations, my partner, I'm getting it, you're, once you tell them you want me to do it. You know, it's the fifth and the ninth, if you could, the meter reading would fall.
I'm thinking about it more when we're in a crisis, so if we, we can go into you know, that old approach to get people on board and even look for change. But if we're in another three-year drought and we really need to monitor, do we need more data? Not, not like, yeah. It's less than a year.
Yeah, I mean, well, you would have the option to change to, I mean, so if you, we found that we needed more granular data, DWR changing for regulation, then you register requirement in this ordinance could require monthly recording.
In part of this program where we do a convergence electric meter report. It's not free because you have to register in state. You have a special well test to do, but then after you do that, you do by minute by minute, it's all, it's all done. So I need. But somehow we may have to do that, but there is, this point in time, there is a charge. But that might also contribute here.
You have any comments? You have any?
It's on this document, but a different topic, so then if you're looking for. So Matt is specific about twice a year versus twelve times.
Yeah, that's what we're talking, it's been the twice, the toll.
I, I'm, I think that's, yeah, so when this conversation is over and there's another point, I have another question.
If this, we have a lot of changes from last Friday until today. It is necessary that it gets pre-planned or needed when another, when you're trying to set up, you can't verify and, you know, I mean, or give direction now, you can move on. You know, again, mine likely sort of simplifying it from. And.
I'm just reading what everybody says.
Yeah, I have a little problem with you suggest twice, you know, Dan, you're thinking we're okay. The other ones are the red line and, um, and I didn't just need to change. Et cetera, yes.
And this is, is this the one that A is really going to get something in, I'm going to say it one at a time. We need to get it so we can get the meters, this part of that.
Well, I, I'm giving up that side.
Exactly.
You know, what I was trying to suggest is that we should, you know, maybe in three or five brands of meters.
Kind of the people, so this doesn't deal with that kind of.
It doesn't deal with this, it's still an issue. It's being well from the companies, I can call them all, and ask them, ask them, be in asking, you know, one meter.
Right. I just did one of the, we didn't know if it slugs down that process that you were trying to.
I was trying to get any.
Okay, guys, well, we want Dan to take it back and explain it, then we'll get back to him.
I'm wondering if it's another change, it's second one.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Um, so my question gets back to the, the, this part where it says the groundwater extraction form should include a request for information on how many acres irrigation method system type, which types of crops are grown utilizing water pump from the groundwater extraction facility. So.
What are the answers?
I have a, I'm sorry. This is, on the previous one, it was page eight and it's G. Uh, and then section, under section two, it's not actually numbered, where it's the monthly readings. And then it, it talks about this groundwater extraction one, uh, that will be included, I guess, uh, with the billing, so I'm guessing that every six months we're going to have to fill this out, but I wanted to confirm that. And then when it comes to a mutual water company, what level of granularity are we going to do by some sort of total irrigated acres, which uh, or, you know, how, how's it going to look? Like I'm thinking about, we have ninety-one lots. Uh, ID one, there are like two thousand connections or something, maybe more in ID one. So what does it look like for a water company? So I, I can understand if this is for an individual private, you know, ags or with a well. You know, what are you growing and, you know, how are you irrigating it? But when you're looking at, you know, our parcels are, um, five to ten acres and, you know, some of the mutual water companies, they're up to twenty acres. You know, so it, again, what, what level of granularity, so when the mutual water company is going to fill out the form, what are you looking to see in some sort of totals? Hope you don't have to break it down by A P M, the system, you know, what's your vision there? And what, what's the expectation and what we're going to put?
Um, yeah, I, I think the vision was pretty high level description of, you know, the type of, uh, waters. You know, maybe for example, in your case, maybe it's mutual water, water for largely domestic use for, or say thirty-five thousand or ninety.
It's, it's, well, we have ninety-one lots, ninety being developed, so, um, and some of them have guest homes.
Yeah, I mean, I.
So it's, it's a, like I said, it's a broad varieties. Very.
I, I don't envision that we're doing a lot of analysis of, you know, the reported production and the, the listed uses. I mean, there's not an allocation program, there's, you know, so it's just, I, I think maybe the intent was just to have a general sense for what the water is going to support, but yeah, the request would be, right? I don't.
So either on the form, preferably maybe in the ordinance, if you're going to be working on some word changing, provide some clarification to, you know, if you're an individual well owner, you know, here's what we're looking for. You know, speaking through a water company, here's our expectation, that would be helpful.
But, you know, we had a copy of, but they're going to be filling out, like if you go a water company, here's the forms, a big look at it. You know, in the bid door, and everyone's whatever, it'd be that, is that something we've got, Dan? You know?
Uh, we, we can develop one. I mean, we're, we're going to have to develop one and, and hopefully we're operating the wheel here.
Right, there should be open access on it.
So, yeah, I mean, if that's the help, then you can.
If you're back there on the back, sir. And I suggest that you have Dan's number.
We, we can talk.
That I leave that form, Dan.
I'm recommending we just have Dan come back to the document, ask the infrastructure committee that, uh, the red lines, two hundred and, and we'll change that. I'm just kidding. So it's pretty recent.
Yeah, thanks. Dan.
Uh, yeah, and you also want the forms.
Yeah, exactly, right, you don't have, right, yeah.
There's no such thing. So I have a question, is this a state requirement to break down a metered well into how many acres of this or that, land speedings, or is this something that we're coming up with here? Because if you have a metered well, what difference does it make if you're approaching that, like? You're looking at the total amount of water.
Right.
You're not looking at a breakdown other than if you're trying to track something.
Right, it's if you got a meter.
If you haven't been informed.
The meter, if you don't, there's a minimum square area that you don't have.
That's a whole separate category.
Right.
In the case of the mutual water companies, you're looking at one meter for how it was living wells there.
Right.
So you really don't care how much pasture, how much crop, how much water.
But if they, but if let's say that person had a private well on there and they had twenty.
But that's different, that's different.
That's different.
Yeah, that's a different story.
Yeah.
So to break down the, the questionnaire, does it make sense?
For them. For them, they just threw in the total acre feet to pump every month, you got it, it doesn't matter, why not to live? He just reads the point you're covering.
Worse pasture or whatever.
Wouldn't matter.
Your meter, you're reporting what you need to report, which is the volume of water you're using. Hi. Does DWR require certain breakdowns of water use types as part of the annual reporting? I mean, I think we categorize it into domestic and active. So, I mean.
We should not.
I don't know, that's pretty alarming, but that is typically how it's presented, but maybe that's just the data source that they come from.
Does Tim have an answer to your question?
Uh, we can, how about we look up an answer, bring that back.
No.
Okay, so the table. Four. Right.
Form like, like Dan just said, it's an obvious one, it's like, A, that's essentially, so, things are really, I don't know.
Uh, yes, to expand the definition of domestic, yeah, good reminder.
Okay. Go to information, uh, groundwater extraction fee, and then page.
All right, so we, yeah, I have my notes here. Yeah, so five A groundwater extraction fee implementation update. So, you know, before the call, we were all here in June, a very lengthy public hearing around the groundwater extraction fee. The board ultimately adopted the groundwater extraction fee. Um, since then, the executive director team has been the heart of work, taking that authorization and turning it into a, uh, a mechanism for the GSA to collect those fees. And that largely has been focused on preparing the, uh, items required to become taxable. And so that is something that, that our team worked on, uh, through the month of July. And it's submitted to, uh, the county assessors, here's the, yeah, office. Uh, multiple communications back and forth confirming that the format and the information is correct. Um, and then ultimately, as well as providing the ordinances and other forms, documentation that's more approved at public hearing. Um, and then the county board supervisors had an action that's meeting this week to, uh, approve conclusion of the area G S A's groundwater extraction fee, the county tax rule, and of which it, uh, did approve. And so, yeah, so that process has been completed. Um, we, uh, now, as mentioned earlier, moving on to the direct billing portion of the process. Uh, so we put in those, um, forms, bills together, sending those out to, uh, urban water suppliers, um, small water utilities, and in some cases, stay small water utilities. Uh, three different classifications, the size of water system, and all have different distinctions. Um, so that's the process. Um, we sent out a kind of an update to the board, uh, staff, uh, in July about what is the anticipated, uh, revenue outcome from that process. Um, and so based on the estimates, we, the, the GSA would be billing for eleven thousand five hundred thirteen acre feet, um, for fifty to twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, that would at a rate of thirty-nine dollars a bid cent, anticipate generate a revenue of four hundred fifty-four thousand dollars and seven, or fifty-five. Um, um, but then, um, it does represent a potential deficit for the M A G S A, which, um, was not unexpected, if you'll recall back during the, the study workshops, and when we were establishing uh, the rates, we did, you know, an, an analysis of, um, the current, well, or the wire that we're using for development of these beats of twenty-three, twenty-four compared to the five-year average, um, uh, groundwater extraction estimate we have for the base, and that is used as the basis of calculating the fee. Sorry, uh, so twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four was a weather year, so groundwater extraction was lower than it had been on average for those previous five years. So the revenue generating is going to be lower. And so we knew that that was the case, we had lots of discussion around, how do we deal with that? Uh, contingency is one way we deal with that, so there's the, uh, uh, contingency, I agree. Now, I guess that, you know, there's a contingency included. Uh, then also there was a prudent reserve that was included in the calculation of the rate. You know, the intent is that with average groundwater extractions, we would be accumulating funding here, here, to be built up, uh, a prudent reserve. And so both of those components of the budget, I guess, for lack of a term, will be used to address the shortfall. So, so the assumption is, while we are going to generate revenue, uh, we're not going to have any contingency as outlined in the budget. We're also not going to generate any reserves this year. Um, and then there is a slight exceedance of that of approximately seventeen thousand dollars that we're still short. And so we will need to look at saving seventeen thousand dollars from the budget, the budget that this board approved, um, in fact, in May or June. Uh, which we think is doable, we've talked about some ways that I think we can save some money here, legal costs. Um, uh, there's, uh, some other line events, you know, we're, we're trying to limit our costs. So I think it's all manageable, but, you know, that is the report on the mechanism and the anticipated outcome. Uh, I thought, uh, Randy, uh, with the, this all, he also made a good point that, you know, that revenues projection assumes a hundred percent payment. So, uh, you know, there's obviously like the non-juice, hundred percent. And it's charging through kind of taxable, I think helps give us the high percentage of payment, but it's still not going to be. So, um, that's kind of the update on the groundwater extraction fee that I have. I don't know, if there's any other questions from the board, it's happy to answer.
Other questions? I wrote you on the block, okay. Let's go, I'm the EMA chair, so I can put my student down, right? Anything else?
Uh, none, yeah, no, the reason we leave it on there, it's just. Uh, none. Yeah, no, the reason we leave it on there is just, uh, you guys have confidence that we didn't forget to, you know. Like, yeah, no, no, both of us.
And now I'm seeing Prop sixty-eight.
Yeah, so just wanted to kind of give a high level review, um, you know, working on Prop sixty-eight. Uh, component two is well underway. Um, it's good, the installation of the demonstration projects, infrastructure, reflecting data. Um, and so that, that it'll be compiled and then analyzed and reported on, uh, to the, uh, components, big component two. Component three is largely done. That was, you know, the rate study or extraction fee, you know, we've, we've done that. Component four is ongoing, as we've discussed with the annual reporting and the five-year eval. Um, and component five is pretty focused right now. That's the groundwater monitoring. That's the board approved, the professional services, where I bring about, that's the board approved, you talk during, during that with CMA. Who is the, their skin, services, bring up the JSA intact to do the design and bidding oversight of the ground monitoring improvements. And so that's, that's the update of my, right, because our making initiatives.
Questions? Questions? They're not okay. Move on to item six. Dates and times, regular meeting, uh, A, this for information, the face of life joint meeting with council, one for September fifth. Item B, that's the EMA regular board meeting, Thursday, September twenty-fifth, four P M. Here. Everybody make that. That action plan workshop. Dan, would you like to discuss those?
Um, yeah, so I think this, this board is largely familiar with the action plan. It was, you know, something with the GSA three-two. Um, in helping part of the process to get the GSA approved. Uh, those workshops, uh, are the wires proponent of the action plan. Uh, the consultant team of GSI steps in, has been developing for the technical analysis. To help delineate the above narrow aluminum areas from the groundwater components of, of San Diego Basin. Uh, and so we scheduled those workshops. We noticed those property owners through a direct billing. For those that may overlay the aluminum area, which we did notice in the mail through the county tax roll records. Um, and so the first workshop will be on September twelfth. There'll be three workshops. One of them, WMA, one of CMA, one of the EMA, the EMA is at four P M. And then there'll be a catch-all workshop on the nineteenth at one P M. And. Um, I guess the only question I would have, we just want to be on the side is with the Brown Act. So if EMA board members are planning, please, please let me know. For those of you who don't have the board or if you do, you know, listen or what are in the future, it's why did you? You can have some English for the workshops. Don't believe that they are, you know, enabled.
Okay. Item seven. Reports, item three reports. There?
Um, just real quick, Bill, you know, and I attended the, uh, urban water institute conference last week. Uh, it's some really good network there. Uh, did learn a little bit about, uh, water banking. And I think that might be a, a concept that the, uh, GSA, particularly the CAG, kind of feel on is to, they're coming up with a way to water bank. The way that's give a credit for those that are good stewards of groundwater and, uh, putting more in and there's, there will draw. That's it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'd like to have agenda items for the next meeting, uh, for, uh. That we look at how we make the sausage on the, you know, the, the channels and. To our staff, maybe twice as hard, uh, the, if there's something that's not legal to have agricultural model, they'll be changed, processed, so that we have it. Back in this, uh, to include agriculture in that process. Um, and, you know, from a budget standpoint, I don't exactly know, like, it's billed for having these weeds every month. They're paying ours manager to attend and leave those weeds. So. I probably, my goal is to have agriculture involved effectively, that's what I have to. Uh, I tried to put, for Joan, I talked about this, like, we know, or if I could just on the agenda that. That this being, uh, in the nation file, in writing, deferred damage request. And then I was told that, um. Here in the chair, wanting it removed. And so I went through it, um. But I, I, I think, uh, any board of emergency, put an agenda, because the JPA is not, like, assignment. On the process of putting agenda items in place. So I can fly and move. Agenda items is not on today, but, um, I think it's really emergency work.
Yeah, um, yeah, I had a question since we had it on. We talked on it through meetings coming up with my question. Why are we going to bring it up again? And once there's new information on it, then we bring it in. That's the reason I'm going to see it being illegal. But yeah, bring it in. Um, just long go through council, that fired last time, council. Was the issue of happening. So, and hopefully in the near future, all the regular staff can go back to their regular jobs and dance. And whatever on the bottom set.
But that's not currently how, how it's happening. And so there's something about playing staff meetings that prevent agriculture from being involved. And maybe we create a different meeting games in some of that work, or are these making those, I'm trying.
Yeah, whatever it take, let's do it to make, make it happen. That's all I.
Um, the body of waters, but we do have a participating CAGs, or having CAGs. So that's another venue, which I ensured that they're user represented. Also, it's been put forward. That's a good help, but we're also, normally I was leaning both. And we brought some more than, would be a market process.
Time to come to my meeting.
Uh, yeah, I would like to propose an item for, bring back the board around, uh, policies and procedures for setting agendas. Uh, there was, there's a lack of guidance in the JPA, and so that's a lot of confusion.
So I'm sure you're going to get with council and come back with a recommendation. It sounds good. You can council. Is council still on? It's going to give us, um, the, exactly what it will be.
Yes, I am on.
Uh, can, can you give us an update on the outcome of item four A?
Yes, I can. I checked the, uh, JPA agreement, and that agreement has several, uh, matters that require a super majority. Four out of five included in those is an agreement with a consultant to do work for the EMA. Uh, the language there looks sufficiently, uh, specific to have covered, uh, the, the contract that was being considered. So, um, my, uh, conclusion would be that the three-two vote was insufficient, uh, for that under the JPA agreement.
It didn't pass.
That's correct. Yes. It's a long-winded way of saying it didn't pass.
Okay, so now it didn't pass, and now we can't go forward with the.
Bring it back.
No. Tim left. That's too bad. Um. Yeah, right. We have the, have more discussion. I'll see which way I go.
I'm sorry to answer.
Yeah.
Point out where it says that exactly. Or turn.
It's in the G U.
And, um.
The question for council is where exactly do you see that it requires that?
It is section eleven point three of the JPA agreement. I'm presuming I'm looking at the correct one. It, it, it looks like it. I picked it up off the website.
Yeah, so I, I, you know, I think you see eleven point three, uh, subsection B, super majority approval. In an opposite standing, as we're going, super majority required, uh, for the following. And then if you look down that list, I think presumably what's being included is that they're not numbered, but it's on the next page. Um, selection of a consultant to conduct work for on behalf of the EMA GSA. Is one that falls under the super majority approval, comma, subject to specific requirements of article nine and five. That's where I.
And, and article nine is not applicable.
That selection of a consultant or selection of a statement in the board, or, or whatever they're, they might be.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear you.
I think a little bit of a complaint, right? And they're hiring an N C S A subcontractor to. So like, that is.
It wasn't, it wasn't, you know, the water, if anyone's in the scope of work. That's the issue, right? It was only one, not who.
Can I speak?
No, no. Um, you're, 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 you're gentlemen, again, you'll be further defined.
I'm not, you know, this should debate with a lawyer, but. But it could be interpreted.
Yeah, I mean, Michael, can we get sort of a legal interpretation in writing just for future reference?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Dan.
Yeah, uh, it's all.
So we have a question from a board member asking for clarification. Is the selection of a consultant or selection of a scope of work from what?
It's actually a hundred.
That.
Well. I would have considered this, uh, the selection of a consultant for, for something and not just a, a, a scope of work, but. And, and so I, I think the, the safer interpretation is to say that it would require four out of five votes.
Okay.
So, so I just want to understand what the implications are, the implications that we may not. Need a grant in power with someone.
That is the risk. Yeah, we're losing a month of time or.
We may reduce public outreach as a result because we don't have the time to do it.
Yeah, a certain prescribed, I think, public outreach countries, um, but it's getting constrained. It's easy to be, to be less developed.
What you're saying is that, uh, the bomb be. It's going to constrain, but the, the end point will be the bomb be elongated in your, they'll have to do public.
Yeah, probably same, it's going to be for whether it's mountain top, the mountain time for the guy with work on it.
I'm, I'm concerned that more.
That's why I'm there.
In a window where we can apply the expenditure to play. And that's, that's the biggest, to me, that's the over.
I just think there has to redo their, their gas schedule, their, you know, their plan, you know, that. I don't say it to me during the performance.
And, and what are we getting on the first? I mean, what, what benefit, what value add is for coming next month?
Big opportunity to look at the scope of work and understand, uh, how to approach some of these individual owners. You know, I'll dedicate the time to, to do that with Tim.
I hope you come back with something that's really substantive, because all I heard today, this is mandatory. And there's not been any secret discussion, or any, um, decisions. It's just how we respond, of course, thirty-seven or however many there are state things. So, so I don't know what you can say, but I'll be very disappointed if we lose a month. And we come back and we don't have something great value to add to. Well, I think the other risk is that we miss out on the alcohol on the high end. Because there's still a streaming of fifty-six thousand dollar credit, we backed to us at, at what we do. So we can still be about three hundred thousand dollars bottom in budget. That's, that's a cost we're going to have to some of the rates.
Yeah, no. The rate's a lot of, one thing.
Not, I'd like to be responsible here. We, we took into consideration whether it exceeded speed. The lower value is the least aggressive, continues to be. And if we're going to avoid that, I mean, you know, it's really, I don't know. Now, thank you.
The value here in that budget, two million, we just put in twelve thousand dollars for ten hundred million value here. So the, so the views. To lower arms, that expense. Bring it back.
That's like twelve thousand dollars. That's low job value. I think dollar item, seventy thousand dollar item is the one where it's pretty.
Yeah, I've heard the challenge, and I've heard that one said, you know, it's great. I think, you know, after a very, here, it's been, right, you have only two gentlemen, got some more?
Okay.
Can you do a special meeting to, uh, two weeks to request your sort of positivity that just keeps being weekly meeting in two weeks for just this one? That's a good idea.
Potential. Uh, I think there was a Friday meeting that got canceled, said. You said, um.
I'd be wrong. The point is, the same issue has been, uh, uh, length shows you.
Yeah, I look like five, and it's like, it should be five.
I make a motion that we do it in two weeks. Um, the inside, the atomic impression is great.
We, we can certainly, they. Tim, for the dragon side, would maybe ask, so we're going to meet with DWR, like, we can, and with Zulun's A P A. There's an assessment of whether or not there's any potential for an extension. Or even what I've heard from some of the GSA's is like certain components are potentially eligible and others aren't. So DWR has just announced it. So maybe if there's no potential for an extension on component four, that we come back in two weeks. Um, if there is a potential for an extension, and that, that came about to a year, then we come back to our regular scheduled meeting.
Yeah. Do you want to certainly, um, we need to have potential meetings? Do you need now, for the two weeks?
Uh, yeah, can we do it now? Everybody's here. Thank you, thank you, September fourth, this is, yeah, it'll be the next Thursday.
It's the, it's the, you know.
Weeks.
Yes, opening day just got.
We have these workshops that they have to, going to support to, you know. Yeah, so like, we want to be, or we're going to front there on here, you know, well. I did, I did, I just said I don't want to, you know, we have a workshop, we have a forum, but, right? We could, are we attending as public when we go to those? That's the legal question, uh, but I mean.
Dan, don't, don't do that.
So I.
Nation that you can't really weigh in on policy. You can go and listen, we're not supposed to speak to each other.
Yeah. So I mean, two weeks from now, I mean, I don't have a good time, and it'd be September eleventh. Unfortunately.
That's a great day.
I'll, I'll have an meeting.
Yeah, I'll have to get back, you know, that day.
And it has to be a hundred percent in person or how does that? Yeah. Okay.
That's it, right? We'll get back on September eleventh possibly. It's got, I don't see again. Hey, everybody here, is that where we're going to do it? We don't have this in the balance.
Well, great job.
Five, four. You know, I, I'm in the, the gym. Trying to cross the hangar.
Yeah. You can take that.